All right, Erin, just let me know when everybody's been let in.
So meeting, okay, we're gonna be in.
I'm sorry, Erin, are we good? Is everybody here?
Yes, yep.
All right, awesome.
Everyone who's in the lobby is in the meeting.
All right, so calling the meeting to order. Good evening. I'd like to call the May 19th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. I'll recognize a call by roll call Barbara Higbee.
Here.
Anthony Mowen.
Here.
Suzanne Spellin.
Here.
I don't believe Sarah Wanger is here yet, but she did indicate she might be a few minutes late. And Deirdre Rudolph here. So for four members present, we have a quorum. Also tonight, we have with us Erin Vera, City Engineer, and I believe I saw Dash. Welcome, are you there?
Hello, everyone.
Hi, welcome from the Planning Department. So on our agenda tonight, we have one consent item. It's PLPC 2021. 0050, location is Zero Project Road, Giovanni Court Subdivision. This is for an extension on a previous approval. The original project was approved in 2016 and extended in 2019. Applicant fully in LLC is seeking a 12-month extension on subdivision approval to coordinate the dedication of the roadway and begin construction. The project is a 13-lot subdivision, 12 townhomes, and one single-family home are proposed. So this is an item on the consent agenda. I would ask if there's any, if the applicant is here today, just to know. All right.
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Is there anything you'd like to tell the board tonight? Is there anything different in the, in the project beyond what was previously approved?
Nothing has changed. We're just in the process, as Erin knows, to purchase the access he's been from the adjoining property owner. So as a paper trail, Erin thought it was a good idea just to get an extension for this approval right now.
All right, and you are seeking a 12-month extension, is that correct?
Yes, we are.
All right, so I would ask if there is a motion?
This is Suzanne. I make a motion that we extend the approval and yeah.
Okay, thank you Suzanne. Is there a second?
Second. This is Barb.
My Barb, going to our vote, Barbara Higbee.
Can I just ask a question? Did you, was it, were you supposed to ask if anyone else had any comments other than the board?
I will, I will ask. It is a consent agenda item, so we don't have to ask for public comment because it's already had public comment. But is there anyone here tonight that wishes to comment on this?
No, good, okay.
Hearing no, going to a vote, Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Anthony Mowen.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
And Deirdre Rudolph, yes, motion carries 40.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to the next old business, we have three items on our agenda. The first is PLPC 2021 0007. The location is 2304 15th Street. It's here for site plan review and secret termination. Amante Pizza is proposing the construction of a 600-square-foot addition and off-street loading area. I would ask if the applicant is here with us tonight, and if so, if you could introduce yourself.
Yes, we're here. This is Ed Esposito speaking on behalf of the applicant.
All right, thank you. You're cutting out a little bit. I'll give you the floor. If you could tell us, you know, update us on revisions that have been made since we last saw this proposal last month.
Okay, thank you. This is Ed. I'd like to refer everyone to the resubmission for the graphic R1, which shows the aerial renderings. I think it's easier to explain what's going on there. The main difference is there's no loading in this application. It appeared there was a lot of negative dialogue with that presentation. So the applicant did remove the loading zone. It's just lawn in the front area. Every, all the elements that were presented before the fence, moving the fence back, the walkway improvements, and he's detailing some canopies and so forth, stair access points on the building, the cooler addition out the back, the fencing, the gates for the dumpster, renovating the garage, all these things are, components are still on the, the plan resubmission, except there's no curb cut for loading. So on the R1, it shows the aerial renderings and the elevations of what's going on there. Just, it's gonna appear like a little park-like environment out the front with the lawn panel and landscaping.
Thank you, Erin. I was just gonna ask if you could pull that up. So Erin, there were some staff issues at our last meeting from the planning. Have they been satisfied to the planning departments? Satisfaction?
Well, again, I can't, I can't speak on behalf of James Rath, who provided the comments, but, you know, my interpretation of the comments that were received at the last meeting was that the curb cut proposal was a nonstarter, and the applicant has removed the curb cut from the plan. I don't recall any staff comments that related to other aspects of the property, but the applicant did, did provide a written response to the commissioners responding to each and every one of James's comments.
Okay, thank you. I would ask at this time if there's anyone here tonight from the public that would like to comment on this application, that please introduce yourself. State your name. All right, thank you.
Hello, can you hear? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear someone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, hi, we live behind, we live behind Amante Pizza, and we have some concerns.
Okay, could you just please state your full name just for the record?
It's Jean.
Jean, and can I get your last name?
Is that mandatory?
Nope, I guess Jean is fine.
My husband and I have some issues. One is about the addition out the back of his building. How close to our home will that come?
To within five feet of that existing fence.
Hello?
Yes. The proposed addition is within five feet of the existing fence.
Five feet of our home?
Five feet, Jean, he's saying that it's five feet distance from the building, his new building, to the property line, to the fence, I guess, he said. I assume is there fence on the property line?
Yes.
No, not, not next to our home.
It's on the property line.
Because there are bedroom windows are right in back of the addition he wants to put on.
So you're that existing two-story building, number 1509 on the plan, is that what I'm?
Correct.
Yes.
So the, this is Ed again. There's two fences, one to the rear, one to the, the back left. The back one to be moved to the property line. So both fences are at the prop. And it's, the correction is in one story, just simply moving the same, that out.
I'm sorry, it's very hard to hear you. Could, I don't know if you're on a mobile phone or what, but you're keep cutting in and out.
Yeah, I hear the same on my end.
Yeah, we can hear them.
There's no windows at that area, no one's, just they, they have a ramp, ramp going down into the basement and steps going up, that's it. There's just gonna be coolers in there.
Jean, I would ask, do you have any further comments? Hello, is, Jean, are you there? All right, could somebody just confirm that they can hear what I'm saying?
I can hear you, DeeDee. It appears as though we've lost Jean. I mean, on that topic, you know, the setback is.
Yes, I'm trying to log on to the device.
Yeah, but we can't hear too well.
Hi, Jean, are you, I hear you there now?
They just disconnected, it looks like.
Okay, so Erin, you were saying that the.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, to kind of, I mean, I understand the concern, right? The addition is, is, you know, closer than the existing structure to, to the residence. It's worth noting that it does comply with allowable setbacks. It doesn't quite line up with the existing structure. It, you know, I don't believe their, their building goes all the way back on the lot. I think it only goes to here. I believe that's what this line here is representing, in which case then, you know, it doesn't quite line up. There's, you know, there aren't any windows proposed on, you know, this is a storage building essentially.
Okay, thank you. So if Jean's not able to connect. I'm sorry, is there? Jean, are you there? Okay, I would ask, is there anyone else here tonight from the public that would like to make comment on this proposal?
Chair?
Yes.
My name is Sue Steele. I represent this Troy on, on the City Council, and I've talked at length with Jean about this issue. There have been longstanding issues with Amante over the years, particularly with noise. The dumpster has been a major issue. I've had to report that numerous times for rectification. So I would respectfully request that if this, if this is approved, that there be some stipulation that dumpster pickup be within normal hours. They have young children living in that home who are disrupted in the middle of the night because of dumpster pickup and, and the noise of lifting and then dumping it down on the ground, which is disruptive. These folks have lived here for over 30 years. This is, this is a quality of life issue for them, so, so it concerns me. And as far as noise goes, I'm concerned about, yes, this is going to be a building without windows, but it is for refrigeration. And what will the noise factor be related to the, to that? The, the air conditioning or whatever units are to be there. I understand it meets the setback requirements. But I think we also have to, you know, recognize that it is infringing very closely on a residence. And, and I would, you know, respectfully request that the, that you provide whatever is possible to accommodate these longstanding neighbors and residents of Troy. And I, you know, if anyone has, on the board has any questions, I'd be happy to. I have, as I said, had numerous conversations with the family over, you know, prior to this proposal, so it's, it's, you know, it's a matter of being good neighbors.
Okay, thank you. So if the board were to make a stipulation regarding the dumpster pickup, what hours, when we say during normal hours, I assume we're talking, you know, Monday through Friday? Anybody have any ideas, eight to five, or is that what you're thinking of, direct day, daytime hours?
Well, this is, this is the owner for Amante Pizza.
Yes.
And I'm responding to Sue about the pickup. Somebody already spoke to the county waste, and they changed the hours to be picked up on the normal hours, which is from six to five. And they've been doing that, but since COVID hit the whole country and the whole world, the pickup, the garbage has to be picked up, and we did talk to them. They did change it in their system. And there is a shortage on their staff that sometimes they didn't pick it up. And the neighborhood complains why the garbage is not being picked. So we do our best to satisfy everybody, but there is some stuff, it's not in our control. And everybody on the board, especially Sue, that Troy, you, you, you know that, that it's been changed. And somebody already spoke to county waste. You can make a phone call to them and ask them what's the schedule for Amante Pizza pickup. And they will tell you it's from 6:00 AM till 5:00 PM.
All right, could you, could you also talk to the board about the noise that?
For the noise, I'll be honest, it's the, the walking cooler, the new walking cooler, I'm walking, like freezer. We will have the unit most likely to be inside the considering, the, the units. And they are very, very quiet, efficient. This is the new ones that like, it's like when you have LED lights in your, like in your home, so replacing the old bulbs. So the same thing when it comes to the, like the new, we're gonna have brand new. And we already have cooler and walking cooler, walking freezer. And we will use the same size, but it's gonna be the same machines. It's only gonna be up to date. So the noise, we don't have any noise. If there is a neighborhood noise that's from RPI kids walking around the weekend, that does not belong to us. We don't have nothing to control over. Unless you guys move RPI from the neighborhood, then you guys are gonna solve the noise problem.
So I understand you're, you're explaining to the board that the mechanical equipment will be inside, not outside?
Well, the, two of them most likely is gonna be inside for the walking cooler, walking freezer. And that's it. We don't have any other stuff outside. And this is only for storage. We're not gonna have any windows. We don't have anything else.
Okay, so you, you would be okay if the board were to stipulate that the mechanical equipment be all housed inside?
Yes, but, I mean, it, I'm telling you, we already have existing, and there is no issues with it. So what's the difference between, I, we can put it inside, but if it comes in for a safety issues that has to be outside, we may leave it outside.
But I guess that the issue is noise potential.
Okay, so we put it inside. That's not gonna be an issue.
Are there any other comments?
Would the board entertain a noise level? Is there a noise level that, from these units, if, if, if they need to put the units outside?
Well, I, I think the applicant has stated that he's willing to put them insides. I don't, do you have a recommendation for that?
If I may, I could address some of these things also. Yes, we, we just are, in light of this anticipating the approval, we were working on the building plans. And Aiman is correct. We have a condensate drain line and condensate pumps from the internal refrigeration equipment that pump to, yeah, some pump system, and then to the exterior, the new drywall that is out there. So it's, the majority of the equipment is inside. However, the ones that are shown even in there are just residential-type air conditioning units. It's no more of a noise than any home would produce. So I don't want to see Aiman restricted to everything inside. I mean, there, there is some equipment that will need to be, some condensers put outside as a normal air conditioning system.
And Chair, that was, that was sort of my point. We currently have a noise ordinance in our code that restricts decibel levels. Already, it's section 2013 of our code. I, I don't know that we would need to further restrict this applicant and his proposal beyond what we've implemented throughout the rest of the city for noise.
We would agree with that because the, the mechanical contractor is well aware, we wouldn't have something put outside that no one else in the city has. And it's a, it's a small portion of what's doing inside. Would remain outside would be a very small, not a, not a sound generator, not an impact. And regarding the dumpster operation, he's gonna have the new gates put on it and controls. And so the noise level from this home is, is basically screened by the garage, the dumpsters. In fact, on the other side of the garage from their residence, which ends before this new rear yard addition. So I don't think the neighbors should experience anything. And I know Aiman, he can speak further to the neighbors to make sure that it's, it's done in a proper way, but he's not like a noise generator. It's gonna be basically, the majority is inside, and the dumpsters, as explained, will be corrected with the new times of county waste pickup.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight from the public who would like to make comment?
Chair, I would, if I might, I would just make the board aware of the fact that the residence bedroom window is, is right over this area. So noise is an issue. I understand. We have a citywide decibel level and so forth and so on, but I just want you to be aware of the proximity of their bedroom window to this addition and the potential. And I'm encouraged if, if the applicant is, is planning to work with the residents, that would be great. And so I would, I would hope that that happens. So, thank you.
Thank you. I would ask at this time if there's any members of the board that have questions or comments?
Hello. Hi, we're the residents. Can we still make a comment?
Yes, of course you can, yes.
We live behind, and we want to know how close this addition out the back is going to be to our residence where our bedroom windows are. And we have young grandchildren downstairs. This dumpster has been waking my granddaughter up screaming. This has been going on a long time, and now if they're gonna put an addition, this is still a residential neighborhood, too.
I don't see why they can't dump the dumpster during the day. Why does it have to be at six in the morning?
Or four, two.
It, it should be, hey, when people.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I, I'm not, who is just speaking? I just, please, when you speak, state your name, just so we have it for the record.
This is Mark and Jean.
Mark and Jean, okay, thank you.
I'm Amante Pizza, and we've tolerated a lot of disturbances during the night from the dumpster, and we're concerned with this cooler out the back, how close to our house is this going to be?
And it's more noise that we have to contend with.
Okay, so that, the, the proposal is that the, this cooler storage expansion is, is five feet from the property line, which is also the fence line. That's what we've been told. That the dumpster is a pickup is currently Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. That's what's under contract, and that the applicant understands that the noise generated cannot exceed the city code requirements.
Well, a dumpster definitely is loud and noisy. They bang it, it shakes the house.
So is your concern the time of day, or?
This is Aiman Khalid. Can I comment on this? So we've been in the business in the area in six years. And when the first thing we start, they says you can put the garbage on the street, then the city says it's too much garbage. So we have to order a roll and roll-off service. So we have to slide the dumpster outside on the sidewalk. And I think it doesn't look so good on the sidewalk. We have all this garbage to roll and roll off. So we did get a bigger dumpster, and it's closed doors. And we don't, I mean, it's for pickup, it's not on the sidewalk anymore. And none of the neighbor come and complain. We thought we adding to the neighbor, and this is something good. And none of the neighbor comes, and which I heard, like, I know who they are next door, next to me. They never comes to me and give me any complaint. And I will be more happy to address their issues before even they come to the deadline and says this and that. And I don't know what you guys want. I can, if you give me another solution for the garbage, I will be happy to take the dumpster tomorrow.
Okay, I would, I would ask at this time.
Don't have them come at 10 o'clock.
Okay, I, I would ask at this time, do any other members of the Planning Commission have any questions or comments regarding this proposal tonight?
Yes, this is Barb. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
First of all, I'm very relieved that the, that the pull-off is taken out of there, the curb cut, because that was, that was not good. My other concern is, this is a very jammed-up site. And as he says, the business has been in existence, but now the addition of the cooler, I, I mean, I just do think that five feet from the lot line is awfully close. And then I'm also concerned that it's, it seems like it's an expansion of the business within the same site. So is the dumpster problem going to be even more so? So I'm, I'm concerned with the noise, and I'm concerned with the, the noise of the dumpsters. I have it in my neighborhood, but it's not 20 feet from my, from my house. It's, but still, it's, it's a jarring when they just slam those dumpsters back down. So I guess my question is, is, what's the volume of, of work that's going to go on here now that you're gonna have this expanded coolers? And it seems just like an expanded operation.
They, he has an established business with pizza. There's folding boxes and refrigerating, you know, anything and storing cases of tomatoes. When you get fresh mozzarella cheese and sausages and sodas, it needs to be stored in refrigeration. So it's just to service the existing business. It's not anything, no more hiring.
No, I wanna, I wanna upgrade it up to, to date technology. There is nothing wrong with it. And I bought no dip pane, I'm gonna do the same thing. So it doesn't matter that what we do. It's, if I'm adding to, to it, so what's wrong with it? It's not adding into the area. We're not, we're not making something bad. We're adding businesses. We, we have families surviving through the business. And if you, if, we should be a business friendly, you know? I'm not doing something bad to the neighborhood. I'm not creating any noise.
What?
I would, okay, I'd like to turn this back over to Barb. Are you satisfied with that answer, or do you have any further?
I, I guess the owner has expressed the frustration he has with the dumpster. He also has frustration. So there are other dumpster companies, I think. So maybe that would be helpful. I, I just think it is a tight site. It's an excellent business, no problem with that. You know, five feet from the, from the, the five-foot setback is very small. I, I don't know. I understand what you're saying is this is not an expansion. This is just making your business work better. I mean, if, if, is it possible that it could be, add three or four more feet on that setback?
Well, this is Ed again, a response, Barb. The setback from the dumpster to that property. Well, this is that again, uh, a response Barb. The, the setback from the dumpster to that property is twenty nine feet or eight.
I'm not talking about that setback. I meant these, the cooling thing. I, I still, I, you, you keep saying that it'll be just air conditioners, but air conditioners. They say it's residential, but right five feet from the line, that, that's close. So I, I, I'm not, I don't know, I'm just asking.
And there's, with all the improvements, it's thirty seven point two four percent green space. Now that, that even in other cities, that's a lot of green space. He's got lawn and buffers. Now what I could offer, I haven't spoken to Amon. Seeing as though the plans. We're just trying to get through planning. I'm not jumping out of my chair to reduce the area, otherwise you wouldn't have asked for the five hundred ninety eight square feet. But what I could offer is that there are no refrigeration units within that five feet. In fact, if he, if Amon wants to plant a, when he's done with construction. He could do something with uh, uh spruce or hemlock trees back there or something um as a buffer, but. I'm only showing two refrigeration condenser pads. Out on the same ride of the, the, the uh, the step access. So we could offer no cooling unit. Cuz we're doing all internal uh condensation pumps. So we don't need those. They were shown on the graphic on this R one. But let's say we trade off within that five feet, a hedge or something. Um. You know, their building ends when our addition begins on the survey, their building goes um. You know, it doesn't go that far back with that five feet in. So it's also their rear yards, Amon's rear yard. I don't know, I, I believe that would help that perhaps it's misleading, we're showing, you know, uh. Three refrigeration units and three condensators back there, but uh in reality, we won't have any.
That would be very helpful if you took those off of there and so that whatever sounds are back there, they're nowhere near that. That's a very small setback with a, with a cha- between a residential and a commercial use.
Okay, we'll remove them, we'll remove from the five feet.
Yeah, and in fact, on the, the plans that we submitted have no condensation. Outside within that five feet, only in the pantry shows that. So.
Well, no, no, absolutely. That's what I'm saying. I'm hoping, I thought you were saying you were also not gonna have them where the blue box is now. Will there, there will still be condensation units there, but not behind the building. Is that what you're saying?
Not behind the building in that five feet, correct.
Okay, well, I didn't think there would be any in the, behind the building anyways. I mean.
Yeah, our plans don't have any.
So are you offering anything here that would, 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 you've offered some trees, but anything else that would move more of the refrigeration or condensers? Further away from the residential use, the adjacent residential use?
I mean, we can put a privacy fence, six feet high and uh like put it around the units so that will mitigate the noise. Which I don't think even you're gonna hear it like more than probably like just regular refrigerator, cuz I tell you, the new ones runs very efficient.
It's, it's unlikely these units with the fence, um, in my experience, it's unlikely they're gonna produce noise. In excess of the adjacent road noise, which is already, you know. It's up there in terms of decibels, just the street itself. So, you know, for what that's worth.
It's up there, but it's ambient. This is, this is close. I, I don't have, I don't have any more comments. I just don't want to approve something that has. The air conditioning and the condensers certainly not within the five feet and if they could be pushed back, I don't even know how to say it other than that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Barb. And I, I agree with Barb. I would ask, are there any other members of the board here tonight that wish? To comment or have questions on this proposal?
Uh, this is Suzanne. I agree with Barb as well.
Okay, thank you. So um, as far as actions go tonight, we're looking, I'm looking here, this as an unlisted action. So we need to declare a lead agency. Is there a motion with respect to the planning commission declaring itself lead agency?
Uh, this is Suzanne. I move that we be declared lead, lead agency for this project.
Thank you Suzanne. Is there a second?
Second, this is Barb.
Barb's second. Going to our vote. Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Anthony Mowen?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin?
Yes.
Deirdre Rudolph, yes. And I, I don't think that Sarah has joined us yet, so that's.
I am with you. Yes, I am.
Thank you Sarah. Uh, would you like, were you here enough to vote?
I absolutely am and I vote yes.
Terrific. So motion passes five zero. Okay, now with respect to determining significance, um, is there a motion for seeker determination?
This is Sarah. I make a motion that we uh issue a negative declaration on this project for seeker.
Thank you Sarah. Is there a second?
This is Suzanne, I second.
Thank you. Going to our vote. Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Anthony Mowen?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin?
Yes.
Sarah Wanger?
Yes.
And Deirdre Rudolph, yes. Motion carries five zero. So who would like to make a motion with respect to what sounds like a conditional site plan approval?
Uh, this is Barb. I'm not sure exactly what I'm, what I would put in it. Um, I, I would, I guess I'll make a motion and people can perhaps fix it. Um, I move approval of the site plan, but with the stipulations, um, first of all, on the existing dumpster. Um, I, I'd like to see that there would be, that complaints do come in if these, if the dumpster is get, is empty too early and too late, you know. Late after six o'clock and really six AM is, is too early. I don't know what you can do about that, but I, I assume that the complaints will come in. On the coolers, um, are, I, I'm unclear, can the coolers be moved further away from the back line? And can those condensers be fenced or something, just to do everything possible and also. Um, as Aaron is suggesting, meet the um, the decibel limit that are in effect. So if, if those things can be.
Barb, Barb, can I, could I, could I restate your stipulations just to?
Yes, please do.
Make it easier on, on, on staff when we, when we write the approval letter?
Please do.
So it sounds like you would like to, would you like to restrict dumpster pickup to a certain time? Right now, the applicant's saying that's six AM. To, I, I think I heard, uh, six AM to six PM or nine PM. Would you guys like to restrict that further?
I, I would. I don't know if, if that works, but yes, let's, like at least eight, eight AM to five or six, whatever.
Okay, uh, so then whatever those hours might be, fill in the blank. Um, and then the second stipulation would be that no. Condensing or refrigeration units be located. Um, any closer to the rear property line in the building, right, within that five, within the setback, the rear setback?
Well, that was part of it, but also is it possible that the, the, those cooling uh things, refrigerators at the rear could be further forward in the building, just.
Oh, these here?
Yeah, it could, does, do they create outdoor noise right there?
I, I don't know, it, I have to ask the applicant that. Do the, do, do those have any exhausts or is that just internal?
No.
Okay, yeah, so that's internal, uh, Barb, to the building.
Okay.
But these would generate noise out here, these two condensing units.
Yeah. And do they have to be lined up side by side like that? Could they be stacked along the bottom and a fence?
Well, it sounded like the, the applicant would entertain locating them inside the building.
Either inside the building, yeah, some way.
Assuming they're outside, where, what would you?
Far, just further from them and, and fenced. But if they could be located inside, that would be great. I don't know how to deal with this. It's, it's outside.
You could say, you could say, you could locate them, uh, you just have to give me a dimension. If you say you want them no closer than ten feet to the property line, okay, then they, then maybe they can slide them here.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Right, okay, so you, you just gotta give me a dimension, that's all I need.
Okay, ten feet, ten feet.
Condensing units want to be located closer than ten feet to uh rear or sideline.
Yep.
And Aaron, I think that's if they're external to the building. If they're internal, I think it, it becomes.
Well, cor- correct, yes, external condensing units, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, there may be two, two units, but they would be no closer than ten feet to their rear property.
Right, thank you, yes.
All right.
And then I only heard the two stipulations, Barb, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, cuz the other ones are in, interior. Okay, yes, I'm fine now. Okay, I so move.
Okay, so a motion has been made. Is there a second?
I second.
Suzanne, second. All right, here we go for our vote. Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Anthony Mowen?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin?
Yes.
Sarah Wanger?
Yes.
And Deirdre Rudolph, yes. Motion carries five zero, approved. All right, thank you. So moving on to our next agenda item under old business. Case number PLPC twenty twenty zero zero three six Cemetery Road and Borradale Drive. Lot line adjustment, site plan review and seeker determination. Keystone Homes Incorporated is proposing to construct ninety six apartment units in three buildings. In a planned development P zone. I would ask if the applicant is here with us tonight and if so, to please introduce yourself.
Yes, uh, good evening, uh, Nick Costa from Advanced Engineering and Survey and uh we are representing. The applicant, Keystone Homes on this proposal. Uh, we, we were in front of you last month. And uh, there was a request for a landscaping plan, which we submitted. Uh, and we would like to review with you. Uh, the landscaping plan. Uh, nothing else other than that has changed on the, on the, on the site plan. And um, uh, I don't know, Aaron, uh, would you be able to let me share the, the screen so I can bring up the, the color rendering of those uh, uh landscaping plan, of the landscaping plan?
Uh, sure, Nick, you should be able to. If you can't.
Yeah.
Um, let me know.
Yeah, ho- host, host disable participant screen sharing.
Right, now.
Okay. Yes, I got it. So th- this is the aerial view of the, of the proposed project, uh, just as a, a, a quick uh summary. This is a, a, a site that has. Been before the board several times and, and has had a, a couple of different uh proposals. It originally. Uh, had a road uh generally located here with a cul-de-sac and it was uh proposing single family lots. Uh, that was a long time ago. Actually, that was approved and it shows up uh, uh, on the tax maps. Uh, and since, since that time. Uh, the applicant uh, uh, purchased the, the parcel and has come in front of the board and previously had proposed. Uh, six buildings with twelve units per building. Uh, kind of the same configuration, but uh. Obviously, the road was a little more centered uh on the parcel and there was uh buildings on both sides of the, of, of the roadway. Uh, and um, uh, that was also approved, but uh, uh, the project uh never moved from that and uh. Then we came back uh last September with a proposal for three buildings, uh, similar to these uh, uh, and it had ninety six units. Uh, and now uh, the last uh two times that we were, that we've been in front of the board, we're proposing uh, uh. Thirty units per building, which is ninety units total. And uh, a- a- and this, this latest plan. Uh, does uh diminish the amount of uh impacts to the site. We, we, we substantially reduce the retaining wall so there, uh, that would be required on the site. Uh, I believe that the uh, the, the seventy two uh units uh. Uh, had retaining walls all the way from uh this area here, uh, behind the, the homes from Lori, and Lori Jean uh drive, which, or Lori Jean Place, which is located right here. As my cursor goes. Uh, and that retaining wall went all the way across the site. And there was also retaining walls uh up in this area because, as I mentioned before, there was, there was uh buildings on this side. So. Uh, by the time we did the building, uh, located, located a flat area for the building. Uh, and we did the grading, uh, we were into this uh, into this hill here. Um, just for um, uh, reference, uh, the site uh drops fairly quick uh, uh, from, from uh. Gurley Avenue uh down to uh what I would call a, a flatter area. Uh, you know, that continues and then it drops again. Fairly quick uh to the rear of the homes uh that are located along Lori Jean uh place. So this plan works much better with the uh, with the topography and that's why. Uh, the, the retaining walls on this side and the retaining wall on this side. Uh, well, on, on this side, they've been uh, uh eliminated. On this side, they've been substantially reduced. This black line right here is the extent of the retaining wall. Uh, and, and, and you can see why because uh, the distance from Lori Jean Place here to the rear of the property line is uh. A, a lot less, so uh, there was, there was uh, uh, the grading that, that was done to the rear of this unit. Uh, there's not much of a rear uh yard here. It, it starts to go steeply uh towards, towards the uh, towards this parcel. So we're, we're proposing to uh come in generally in the same location as the, as the previously accessed road that was gonna be dedicated to the, to the city. Uh, if it was a, a single family uh, uh proposal. But uh, this, this will be all privately maintained roadway and parking area. Uh, and the, and there's a sanitary sewer. That comes in from Lori Jeaned and, and it was brought up to this location where there's a manhole that uh terminates uh that uh, that sanitary sewer. Uh, and then we'll continue that uh at the rear of the, of the homes uh to uh serve uh the new, the new apartment buildings. And then there's water that's along Cemetery and also along Gurley and we're gonna be bringing in that water and also looping it back. Uh, to connect to uh Gurley Avenue. So there'll be a, a, a kind of a loop, well, it is a loop, uh, a water system. Uh, that will serve the, that will provide municipal water to the, to these new buildings. Uh, so that was a quick summary, uh, just to bring everybody up to date, but. As you can see, uh, what we've done is we've shown uh the proposed uh landscaping that's to be done. Uh, you know, a, a lot, obviously, we were very sensitive up here because there are driveways and there are uh headlights that would be. Sending uh, uh, the, you know, the lights would potentially could uh go towards the uh, the uh new building. So. We kinda uh put in some uh, evergreen plants along here to help uh diminish the impact of the, of the headlights. We also planted this area heavily because there are adjacent uh units uh to, to the south. Uh, there is already existing vegetation in this area and, and obviously, this is, so, this would be supplemented. Um, along here, uh, again, we, we did the same thing, uh, and we planted it uh on the other side of the wall to help uh break up the. The uh impact of that wall uh that, that it would have to these residents. Uh, so. Uh, you know, and, and so on, it goes, continues on for the entirety of its uh boundary, the common boundary line. This is our stormwater management area. Um, so there's not, there's not much planting that, that's done here and this, this area right here. We, we do have the stormwater uh, uh system that, that's located in this parking area and, and the swale here. Uh, that comes through, so uh, we didn't do too much planting in here because we do have a, a, a utility line that goes in here. So. Uh, we couldn't do a lot of planting here. Um, we did some planting along here. Uh, we, the, our grading stops generally in this area and there, and there is existing vegetation in this corner. Uh, that we, that we're gonna, that's gonna remain. So uh, that, that's the perimeter uh planting. Uh, there is additional planting that's shown uh on the buildings. Let me uh bring up that. Uh, the, the, this uh view, which is a little uh, uh closer and you can see that in front of each building, there'll be a, a mix of uh, flowering. Shrubs and, and uh, uh, other type of uh plants and, and some manual flowers that. other type of plants and and some manual flowers that that will be planted to help dress up the front of of the of each building. So that that is our landscaping plan. And if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer those. But I just we just wanted to review that with the board as per the request at the last meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would ask at this time, is there anyone here tonight from the public that would like to comment on this proposal? Okay, I don't hear anyone. Are there any questions, comments from board members?
Dee Dee, this is Sarah, and I I do have a reaction to the landscape plan. My my general comment is that although I appreciate this this exhibit, given that this project is of significant size and complexity, I would have expected a landscape plan that actually tells me what the plants are and the size and species. Okay, so I I feel like I know a little bit more now, but not that much.
Okay, Sarah, I apologize. The these are the color rendering. Well, we submit it to to Aaron and Dash do have that landscaping table shown on.
Okay.
These are the color rendering of it, and I apologize.
It's page 21 of your it's page 21 of your packet for this.
Eric, could you just throw it? Could you put that up?
That was sent out to you guys via email. It's also on the shared folder.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that, Sarah.
No, you don't need to apologize. If it's in the packet, I it was me not finding it.
Yeah.
Okay, in that case. Barb, was that you?
Yeah.
I thought I heard somebody talking. I don't know who it was.
Barb started talking.
I I just have the same issue. I didn't also didn't see it. And whether we have it come to us tonight or they just make sure they submit it, whether the the planning staff has reviewed it. Because we do usually have more information.
The, yeah, this was sent out to you, and it's also included in your staff report as well. The 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 planning the planning department's review of the plan.
And it was acceptable?
I'll let Dash speak to that. He he reviewed it.
Yes, I can speak on behalf of the planning department. The landscaping plan that I reviewed was acceptable and the landscaping table all included species of of various plants and trees that were acceptable to the area and this location.
Okay, thank you. I also note on the staff report, there was like potential adverse impacts of drainage and erosion concerns due to the slope. I don't know if that could be expanded on. I I'm not aware. Was the GPI letter responded to that we got last March, as I asked at the last meeting?
We we are, Chairwoman, we are working towards replying to that to that letter on all those items. This is there was a full set of drawings that were submitted with the previous submittal that showed the erosion and sediment controls. This will not diminish the 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 use of those of those methods that there are shown on those drawings. It it they're just being changed to apply to this particular to this particular layout. Again, there will be sediment and erosion control methods as a as a approved you know, as suggested by the New York State DEC Erosion and Sediment Control Manual. And also, the stormwater will be fully compliant with the New York State DEC Design Manual. And and the details, you know, we're working on the details of the detention basin. Currently, the entire site, as I mentioned, because of the topography and and the existing topography is shown on on this. And you can see that that these lines represent two feet in elevation change. They all go towards the rear of the Lori Jean Place. And and what we're doing is we're picking up, we we have a swale on the on our grading plan. We have a swale at at the edge of the pavement here that picks it up and takes it across the road in a culver system. And same thing with the 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 drainage in the parking lot gets picked up by catch basins and and goes into the close drainage system that takes it over to the detention basin, which slowly releases it into the existing closed drainage system that exists on Cemetery Road. So it will diminish the amount of runoff that goes to out to the Lori Jean Place as as the previous proposal also did. And I think that this actually improves it from from the previous because we do have a little bit more room for for our detention area to to allow less runoff than than we previously had. But we are working on.
What's the steepest slope that you that you're proposing? The proposed slopes, not the existing.
Yeah, the proposal, Aaron, I think we have some 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 areas in in this to be a one on two and a half slope. And you can see that these contours right here, these are existing contours. These are these are probably more like a one to one and a half slope. They're almost vertical.
Is um one to two and a half, I I I don't see an issue with that. Are you but are you guys proposing some sort of erosion control blanket on the slope when you when you do?
Yes, yes, that anything that gets disturbed would would be cover if if it's not seeded immediately, or if it's over one on three slope.
Okay, over one on three, perfect, okay.
Yeah, that's that's correct.
Is there a note? Could there could there be a note added to the plans to that effect?
Yeah, oh, yeah, sure. No, no, on the on the grading plan, Aaron, we'll 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 have that as our grading notes. Anything that exceed one on three would have the erosion blanket would be required.
Well, Chair, the as the applicant was saying, they have not yet responded to GPI's to GPI's letter. But, you know, that that there weren't any items on there that that I don't believe can be addressed, right? They do they do require changes to the plan, but they're not changes to to layout or anything like that. Unless unless the unless the commissioners reviewed the letter and there's anything specific on there that they would like to see addressed in a different way.
I was just, from a process standpoint, so this will still go back to GPI for review and approval.
Correct, just like, I think Taylor Apartments was also recently approved where they had not yet responded to the.
Right, so that would just be a potential condition of the approval.
Correct, and there's actually another condition. I was speaking with Chris Whelan today from from DPU. And I he would like to have a stipulation added that the applicant coordinate with his office for approval of the sanitary sewer system.
Okay, thank you. Any and then I'm just going from memory. We also this needed zoning. So did that did this go to zoning earlier this month?
No.
Variance, correct?
Yes, it does. We we have 124 parking spaces. And and we do need a variance for having less than one on two parking spaces per unit. We're scheduled for the meeting. Dash, if you could help me out, is that the early June, right? The that is?
Sorry, regarding the next zoning board of appeals meeting?
Yes.
Let me let me check my calendar real quick. Hold on one second. I'll I'll try and.
It's the first Wednesday in June. I want to say it's June 2nd, but.
So this would have to be, we'd have to have that as a stipulation as well.
Correct, June 2nd, the first Wednesday. Yes.
Thank you, Dash.
So I'd be contingent upon zoning board approval of the variance. So are there any other questions, comments, concerns from any of the board members? All right, so where are we with this? We need to, I don't believe we have declared ourselves lead agent yet. Is that correct, Aaron?
I apologize, Chair. I I rely on Andy for questions on matters like that. I I I don't recall if you if you've declared yourself lead agency.
I don't, yeah, I don't believe we did, so.
I I, you know, to be on the safe side, you you could certainly make a motion again to that effect. This is a an unlisted action, so it does not require coordinated review. So the board can act, you know, individually, and then the the zoning board could do their own secret process.
Okay, so I would ask the members of the board, is there a motion with respect to seeker lead agency?
This is Suzanne. I move that we be declared lead agency for seeker.
Thank you, Suzanne. Is there a second? I heard two seconds, so I'll go with Anthony second. So going to a vote, Barbara Higbee. Anthony Mowen.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Sarah Wanger.
Yes.
And Deirdre Rudolph, yes. Motion carries five zero approved. Moving on to a seeker determination of significance, do I hear a motion?
Well, this is Sarah, and I am comfortable making a motion for a negative declaration with regard to seeker.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Suzanne. All right, here we go. Going to our vote, Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Anthony Mowen.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Sarah Wanger.
Yes.
And Deirdre Rudolph, yes. Motion approved five zero. Okay, would the board like to entertain a motion for, I think we talked about three stipulations that we were previously talking about, conditional approval? Does anyone have that motion?
Dee Dee, this is Sarah, and I am willing to make the motion of approving the site plan with the following three stipulations or conditions. As described by, I hope that Aaron can assist us here.
So so the first, no problem. The first stipulation would be that the applicant adequately address all of the comments in the third-party engineers' review letter. The second condition would be that the applicant obtain approval from the Department of Public Utilities for the sanitary sewer system. And you'll have to help me with the first stipulation. Oh, zoning zoning, yes, that the the yes, that the variance is be obtained for zoning.
Yeah, perfect. Okay. So that being the motion, is there a second?
I second. This is Barb.
Thank you, Barb. Going to our vote, Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Anthony Mowen.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Sarah Wanger.
Yes.
And last but not least, Deirdre Rudolph, yes. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
You too. Thanks. So I I the next agenda item, I believe, is on tonight because it was tabled at our last meeting. It's PLPC 2021 0010 Winter Garden Site Plan Review and Seeker Determination. I'll just read through the brief description. David Bryce is proposing the demolition of approximately 85% of the Uncle Sam Mall and the construction of a parking garage, commercial retail office spaces, approximately 60 apartments, an outdoor plaza, and the restoration of the freer building with new internal connection to the winter garden. So I I don't believe the applicant is here tonight, that there's no new information. Is that true?
That's that's correct, Chair. As you said, the, you know, it was tabled until the next meeting in in April, and so it's on the agenda, but the applicant hasn't submitted any new documentation. We're still we're still coordinating with their engineers and attorneys on a few a few items.
Okay, so it might be appropriate for a motion to table this, I guess, indefinitely? Would that be?
I I I think that would be in line, yes.
Okay.
I'd move to table this matter and tell the applicant request to be placed back on the agenda.
Thank you, Anthony. Is there a second?
This is Sarah. I second.
All right, going to vote, Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Anthony Mowen.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Sarah Wanger.
Yes.
And Deirdre Rudolph, yes. Carries five zero approved. That is the end of our official agenda. So I would, at this time, you know, this is my final meeting. I would like to thank you all. You'll be needing to pick a new chair at either, you know, your next meeting. I don't know if any of you have any other items that you want to discuss at this time before we do a motion to adjourn. All right, my favorite part of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Suzanne. Is there a second?
I second.
All right, here it is. All in favor, aye. All right, awesome. Carries approved. Thank you all. Good night.
Everyone.
Thank you, Dee Dee.
Thank you, Dee Dee, for your service.
Oh, thank you. I hope to see you guys in real person sometime. All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.